Good evening and welcome to the school board meeting for WICO Community Schools. It is Monday, November 20th. Let's start tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. We have no media present tonight that I'm aware of. We're going to start with Students of the Month. The WICO Senior High nominated by Principal Amy Evans, we have Kylie Kern.
I am very excited to nominate Kylie for many reasons. I know I've talked about her a little bit at a board meeting before, but Kylie was the first WICO student that I met. I remembered her name probably because it was my daughter's name, but most importantly, I was walking down our ramp and the band was coming up to lunch and she's, "Who are you?" And the thing about the band is you feel welcome. That's one thing that Kylie excels in is that she is always there for her band. When we go to competitions, even when we're walking back, for those of you that aren't familiar with band competitions, it is a very long walk back with all of your instruments and everything that you need. And she'll tell the other teams, "Hey, good job," or "Good luck, way to go." And just to see that leadership, not only in the band but in the school. You see it in the hallways, in the classrooms. She's just a really, really special young lady and it was absolutely my honor to nominate her. So congratulations Kylie.
Congratulations Kylie. From the Junior High nominated by Rochelle Lineiger, we have Jacob Tuttle.
Jacob was nominated by Mrs. Lineiger. She apologizes for not being able to honor you. He is a truly exceptional seventh grader. He brings positively positivity and a strong work ethic to the classroom. He participates in class but does not dominate the conversation. Instead, he selfishly tries to do what is best for the class as a whole. Whether it's helping his peers or waiting patiently for others to finish. His kindness and willingness to help shine through. She's honored to name Jacob Tuttle as the November Student of the Month. Congratulations.
Congratulations Jacob. From South Willey Elementary, we have Danica Day nominated by Jessica Long.
So like all of these students tonight that are being recognized, Danica is a model WICO Wildcat. She's an excellent fifth grader. She treats everyone with kindness and is always doing the right thing even when no one is watching. She is patient when working with her peers but also does this while doing her personal best. She's a great leader at South Willey Elementary School and I am lucky that I get to have her in my class.
Congratulations Danica. From the WICO Career Academy nominated by Jay Oak, and we have John Morgan.
All right, before I get started, I'm going to be right here. Can you guys hear me out there?
Sure.
That's what I got. When I think of John, I think of everything good from the kid. And I know it starts at home, so this is a shout out to mom and dad. Just a great kid. I've enjoyed watching him the last three years. I hope he sticks around for the rest of this one and next year. Because they always talk about going to the workforce early and I hope he stays. Because we have a lot to give to you, you guys, John. So this morning, or this afternoon, I realized I forgot what it was I wrote about John. And so I rewrote something. So I'm going to go ahead and read it. And I get nervous in front of big crowds, but I knew that. So, "WICO Community School Corporation has a mission statement posted on our website. It speaks to the goal of fostering lifelong learners and responsible citizens. Similarly, the WICO Career Academy has posted a vision statement that speaks to promote and build self-directed achievers, problem solvers, and collaborative workers. I nominated John for Student of the Month because it is my belief that he has achieved and continues to display these attributes. I believe that John, as John continues his journey, he will continue to be successful in whatever post-secondary path that it is that he chooses. Congratulations to the WCX Student of the Month, Mr. John Morgan."
Congratulations John. From Pearson Elementary nominated by Angela Spiker, we have Abel Miller.
So I'm Kristy Hopper, the elementary principal of Pearson. And Mrs. Spiker is actually working concessions, I think, at a sixth grade basketball meeting at Pearson this evening. And I don't believe Abel is with us, but I will go ahead and read what we have for Abel Miller. So Abel is always willing to try new things and work hard. He always has his smile on his face and is kind to others. Abel embodies a PES Student of the Month by its caring and respect, using teamwork, being responsible, and being safe. I am happy to nominate Abel for this honor. Thank you.
Congratulations to Abel. And new tonight, our Little Cat of the Month nominated by Jamie Pano, is Hayden Henson.
I have Ms. Jillian with me. This is Hayden's preschool teacher. I nominated Hayden because of his delightful smile that he shows me every single day. So I've had the pleasure of being with Hayden for the last two and a half years. And from this time, I witnessed him from infancy growing up into this sweet little gentleman that he is. Each day, he greets me with a hello. And he's always very polite and very kind. His teacher, Ms. Jillian, says he is such a delight to have in the classroom. He always finds a way to brighten everyone's day. If you pass him in the hallway, you can always count on him to say hello with a smile. Hayden is a very good friend and is always making sure all of his friends are feeling happy. He plays well with all of his classmates and I can always count on him to help me whenever I ask. We are very proud of him.
Congratulations Hayden. So the Students of the Month and their families can leave after headliners. Right now, we're going to move into a presentation by our agriculture teachers, Ken Johns, Emily Murphy, and Cassandra Pendrod.
Okay, while they're getting the screen up there. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Ken Johns. I'm one of the three ag teachers out here at the Career Academy.
All right, I'm Emily Murphy. I'm the other ag teacher out here.
I know, we've all met. Well, as soon as Jason's working on it, a moment until four p.m. I'll tell you what, while he's doing that, I can put in a quick plug. If any of you are looking for something to do tomorrow night, tomorrow night, to help support a program here, to get some hot chocolates, some cookies, and to get in out of the rain where it should be, at least nice and warm, we are having our annual FFA wreath and tree auction tomorrow night out here in the barn, the ag barn. Please, it starts at six o'clock. Come on out and join us.
All right. All right, so I'm going to start off with a little bit of background first in the first slide. All right, so earlier in the semester, Mr. Johns, Mr. Benedict, and Mr. Matt Doms met with representative of Case IH, Clint Jenkins, Strategic Accounts Manager, North America. At this time, Mr. Jenkins presented an opportunity to include the ag department of the WCA in a program that has been offered to ag college programs around the nation. The Case IH company would be willing to offer the WCA the opportunity to lease the tractor for $1 a year. Each year would have the opportunity to get a new tractor to lease with the up-to-date programs and accessories for that model. The tractor in question would most likely be a 150 HP Maxim. The school and chapter would be responsible for insurance and maintenance with a contract to local dealers. After discussing this opportunity with the other two ag teachers at WCA, some research was able to be done with focus of possibilities and opportunities this program could provide for our students. So the next slide is an example of the tractor that we could potentially get. And so now our current status. Research has started on the possibilities of the use of the tractor and land around the WCA to capitalize on this opportunity. Students were polled on their thoughts on the proposed use of the tractor and land around the WCA. A community member had approached Mr. Johns about using the area around WCA's hayfields and test plots for the ag program, utilizing the equipment that the community member has and worked out a payment program based upon yields. Further discussion was presented to the superintendent here at WCA for WICO schools to determine if this program was possible, a possibility. This discussion led to this presentation tonight.
And now I get to go through the part that has been causing some back and forth on a few things. What you see here on the screen is a overview of the WCA and the lands that we have. Now, some of those are currently in use, some of them are not. What we started looking at is not so much where we actually wanted to put things, but where could we and what could we do with them. So what I'm going to put up here in a moment is that big ostentatious goal of what we would like to do. Being realistic, I know it's going to be less than this. But if you don't ask for the stars and the moon, you don't get the sun. So that's what we're trying. So that's what we're trying for. Parts of this that I'll start to go through here, because there's what we were kinda looking at. In addition to what we could do in the classes with this equipment, we could teach all sorts of things in the classroom or associated with the classroom through plant soil science, through horticulture, through our Principles of Ag class, to go through and have this tractor be incorporated in the program. Teaching students maintenance on it, teaching students to actually drive it. How to back a wagon, because you'd be surprised how many of them can't do that. You'd be surprised how many of us adults have problems doing that. So we can do that. We can talk about the equipment use, the different equipment out there. But as far as the land use, what is there in the red is kind of what we were looking at going, hey, this would be a great area to do this. The one thing we wanted to do was keep the view from State Road Five open to the school. We didn't want to take that up. But we wanted to utilize, or at least try to see what we could utilize that tractor with and the equipment possibility with the rest. Now, off to the far right, you'll see that there is a field back there that the school does own. Currently, it's, we've got, we're working with some of the local farmers, one in particular that has planted it, harvested it. Luckily for us, we're able to go back there and take care of some of the waste from the barn, which is free fertilizer, so that's a good thing. As we look through the rest of it, and you all have copies of this in front of you, so you can see a little bit better. I know it's not coming up great on the screen. But we have a couple areas to the north of the school and then back to the west, southwest of the school, that could be set aside as pretty good-sized areas to put in test plots, to put in hayfields if we wanted to do that. That way, the students could, at the end of the current year, they might be able, well, at this point, no, they could see how to plant it. We might be able to get a cutting later at the end of 2024 as they're coming back, if we got started early enough. And then, for years going on, our first cutting, if we did hay, as an example, which is what that community member talked to me about. By the time school's out, we could have our first cutting. We could have a couple, at least one if not two cuttings over the summer. That could be, help out a student with their SAE project. Some students that don't have that opportunity, we could help provide that. And then, once students are back in school, we've got the opportunity for at least a third cutting, if not a fourth, depending on what we put out there. The reason that we were looking at that instead of row crops had everything to do with the fact we don't have the money to go out and buy a combine. Okay, so harvesting was part of what we were looking at. With hay, the cutting, raking, baling, in this case, the harvesting, harvesting, yeah, there we go, is not so intensive on equipment as far as the cost. Now, some other things that we put in. To the right of the pond, you'll see where I've got in there that we would be using the tractor and hopefully help maintain some of the paths we have through that woods. The cross-country team utilizes those paths right now. And to be able to help them out by going through and mowing that with something a little bit bigger than the little lawnmowers we have would help them out. It would also help out being able to help manage that area and a couple of the other areas back there as kind of a wildlife refuge. Some of what we've been tasked with is cleaning up that area, making it to where we have access to, be able to utilize it more. We've got an area in there for a wildlife food plot down there by the pond. There's a couple reasons for that. The biggest thing is, one of the young ladies that we have is starting an SAE, which is a Supervised Agriculture Experience Program, to go through and clean that up. Try and help support her and make it where she's got the chance to have that SAE. She moved in a couple of years ago, does not have all that, everything set up. So we're trying to help that out. There's an area in there for a school garden, because we would like to be able to take from the greenhouse, take some of the stuff that we raise in there, put out there. Unfortunately, with some of the discussions, I had to take off the one that I really wanted on there. Because ongoing efforts with this, I have been in discussions with Mrs. Snafly about the potential use. And the first thing I got told was, I couldn't plow up the football field. Show me an ag teacher in the state that doesn't dream of doing that. And, well, I got told I couldn't do it. So I've been working with her to come up with some way of what we can do out there. And at the same time, working with the athletic department, because we want to make sure that students don't lose the use of the training facilities. We want to make sure that we're not taking over something that they need. You have a great football field out here. All it needs is a little bit of work and it'll be back up there for soccer, football, whatever the case may be that they're looking into. There's an area out there for shot put, discus. We don't want to take that over. We just want to use the area next to it. Okay, that's kind of what we're looking at. We don't want to take away from any of these student organizations. We wanted to enhance it. And nothing's set in stone. Basically, what we're looking for tonight is the approval to go work with Mr. Jenkins to get the ball rolling on getting the tractor here. Because we've already got a use for it, we're just looking at what we can use it for in addition to that. And I believe that's it. I know you were looking at the pictures earlier. What questions can we answer for you tonight?
I have one.
Yes.
Will there always be a teacher supervising when you are really?
When we are doing the work with it, yes, there's gonna be a teacher and/or adult. If we have a student who, so for example, the community member who came and talked to me is also the parent of one of the students. So if they're out there with their daughter, their student, working through it, may not be out there for that. But any other time that students are involved, yes, we would be out there. It's a liability issue. Also, it's the whole thing of trying to make sure that they're learning. We want to make sure that they learn. So yes, there should be a teacher out there to do that.
So where would you get the rake and the baler to do the mowing?
For the short term, the, Mr. Anderson is the farmer in the area that approached me and was very interested before we even learned about the tractor. As going through and setting some of this area up, he's volunteered us to be able to use some of his equipment. Ideally, as we go through and become in this program more, we would be able to start purchasing some of these equipments. There's always auctions. There's local people around, local equipment vendors that we can go talk to and maybe we can work out something, maybe a discount, maybe they lease it to us and like what's going on, or just outright sell it to us.
Are you looking at round bales, square bales, and what are you gonna do with them? Sell them? Are we getting cattle to feed?
The first thing I would be looking at is, which is gonna make us the most money in the area. But I'm also looking at, round bales are gonna be the easiest as far as storage and everything else. But if we have animals inside the barn, which ultimately, I'm hoping this will help support the animals in the barn, when we get that program going again. I'd like to have some of that hay be able to be used for that. So square bales would work better for that. So we might have to do a combination. Plus, if we're doing test plots on the different types of hay that we could use and grow in this area, which one grows best, which one's a hotter one for certain animals, that sort of thing. It may have to be that we go into square bales to be able to control the weights a little bit better so we can keep that data to be able to share. And students be able to use that as part of their agri-science programs, which is a whole other story with FFA.
I think this is exciting. I'm looking forward to having some hayfields out there or something, making some use of the area we have out here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to, just to be clear, I hear no objections to the tractor lease?
No.
None.
At least, we don't, I mean, it's just, we just wanted to get the board's opinion and your thoughts on that.
For a dollar a year, how could you, no.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
I mean, under the $50,000 range, they don't even have agenda items. So we just wanted to bring it to your attention and make sure it was okay everybody to move forward. Pretty excited about that, so.
Thank you.
I like you've done a lot of work.
It is opening up a lot of opportunities for the students, which does mean a lot of work for us. But I know I'm willing, I know you're willing to help out the students.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna do headliners next, which is great news from around the district. We're gonna start with Whitco Art Department. Recently, five Whitco Art students received medals at the 54th World China Children's Art Expo. And our congratulations to Amelia Springer, Catherine Dekanaw, Aiden Baldridge, Emma Morse, and Kalen Swartzenlander for this amazing accomplishment. The Art Department at Whitco has received 55 state, 45 national, and 207 international awards to date. In community service involvement, we want to give a shout out to Amy Brown and Co. and Shipper for volunteering time for the charity Feed My Starving Children at the Nappany Missionary Church. They, along with over 90 other students and staff from every area schools, packed meals to feed hungry children. This was a community service project performed in conjunction with their fellow District II FFA officers. And finally, we had Veterans Day tributes. And it was a beautiful day for a parade on November the 10th when the students at South Whitley Elementary were able to honor our local veterans with their participation in the annual Veterans Day Parade and Reef Laying Ceremony in South Whitley. The students and staff at Pearson Elementary honored local veterans with a program in the elementary gym that included music, art, picture slideshow, guest speakers, and even refreshments. This is a great opportunity for everyone to remember those that have served to protect the freedoms that we enjoy today. So if you were here for Student of the Month and haven't left yet, you're welcome to do so at this time. We're going to move on to our principal and director reports. We're gonna start with Mr. Chris Evans, who's our curriculum and TAP director.
Thank you. Couple of general statements. Some of this is from the time I spoke at the board report, the board work session. But all of our evaluators have been certified who are, who evaluate our certified staff. A lot of information about ARC, our, the American Reading Corporation, who has, is part of our reading adoption. Almost all of our students have been ERLD, which is the assessment they give to place them in their reading level. What I chose to do today, I talked a little bit about giving you a report every so often. And so I've had those, made sure those were in your packet. Some of the information, and again, it updates constantly, so it is real time. So when this report was printed on November 16th, anytime anything happens at any of the schools, from K through eight, it automatically updates. So right before I walked in here, I wrote down the new percentages so that we can kind of discuss those. So this is a real simple look. It's our dashboard. And what it does is it gives you, kind of, don't pay attention to the part on the right with the 0% because we're not there, we're not incorporating that yet. But again, if you remember last year, I unfortunately had to tell you about the 90%, 10%. 90% were below and 10% were at or above. Well, with just a few months of the new curriculum being implemented, right now, that percentage on the 16th was 25.9% of students that are at or above grade level, considered reading proficient or above. Right before I walked in here, that number is now 28.4. So last year, we were about 90-10. We are almost 70-30. So the next step, there's emergency level, which obviously students are struggling. There's the at-risk level, which is the students who are at the greatest chance of moving into the proficient and above. And the at-risk level is at 31.8%. So those are the students that we kind of watch specifically because they are ready to kind of step right up into that as, as the instruction goes along and they move into the next level. So that, to me, is incredible news only for a few months of the instruction with our new curriculum. The second and third is more colorful. And this is the opportunity where I can show you, the top level was, the date was October 16th. So it's a month back from when I just ran the report. And I know it's tiny, but you can see the numbers in there. The numbers change. And obviously, the goal is to get everything from the red through the yellow. So red is emergency, yellow is at risk, and green is proficient or above. And those numbers, again, they continue to change. So every time a child is assessed, it's updated in real time. So these, again, this chart has already changed since the percentage has changed. But it would be something that I will present to you each time so that you can see the growth of, as the students pro, progress through the curriculum. We just got another 110 boxes of curriculum supplies delivered, which I will be delivering either tomorrow or the day after Thanksgiving when we come back on Monday. There's also ongoing professional development through ARC. And you can see the dates that we've had some virtual meetings and some in-person meetings. I attend all of those so that I can be onsite when they are in person and I can be in front of the computer when they are virtual. And then we also have ARC leadership. So we have leadership from each building, principals, master teachers, and a number of staff so that it helps kind of spread the word, more eyes and more ears on the program. I did do a librarian training because we are going, we are looking at taking the books that we currently have in our libraries and marking them in the ARC reading levels. So if I read at a gold level, I can go into the library and I can look for all the tags that are on the books that we currently have that will be marked in gold. And I know that is my independent reading level. So I can read that book without any instruction or any support from a teacher. And so I'll be working with the two elementary librarians and hopefully eventually get up to the junior, senior high. And then the next page in the report, there's our, our coming up trainings in January and December. So we will have our onsite, again, I believe it's at the high school or onsite, and the other two are gonna be virtual training. So obviously, at any time you want to be included in something like that, you are more than welcome. The last thing I have on there, it says Twitter, X, and Public Relations. One of the things that I had thought about last year, we are in kind of the Twitterverse. And NIET is the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching, which implements our TAP program for us. And anytime I am in a cluster meeting or an ILT or the district, I try to take a picture and I post it on Twitter. And of course, our @WhitcoCommunity and @NIETTeach. And the other one, hashtag education, hashtag edchat. Those are ones that the community uses. And for example, I posted the South Whitley cluster when I was in that and tagged all of those. And then, and the NIET National actually liked it. So that way, not only anything that we do here that a picture gets posted and these are used, it goes out to anything in the state, anybody who's a TAP school in the state, and in the nation. So the nation gets a chance to see what happens here at Whitco when our TAP was implemented. And so my goal is, I printed up all these little baby cards and laminated them. So I will be passing those out to the principals and master teachers because I can only be in one cluster and there's three other ones going on. So hopefully, somebody within those clusters will begin to take pictures and use this to post those so that every single week, we will have something out in the national sphere, bringing recognition not only to our program but to TAP in general. That's all I have.
That's a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Peano, Director of Alternative Services.
Hello, hello. Just so you are aware, Whitco does have their childcare license. It's state official. As of Monday last week, we are open to the community. And it is registered within the FSSA and also under the umbrella of the DOE, which is huge. It's a big accomplishment. I want to thank all of you for your support and your belief in me and the program. It's grown from 16 with the capacity now of 81. We still have to maintain the ratio, so we're not going to put 81 children in just yet. But someday soon, you'll, you'll see over 100 kiddos in that center. So thank you again. Our future plans include our renovation, which is well underway, still... Our future plans include our renovation, which is well underway, still a February timeline, February, March timeline, depending on what they find, or, you know. Right now, we have concrete, we're waiting on concrete for our sidewalk, so just that timeline could fluctuate. Also, hiring and training staff with all of the new seats, we'll need qualified staff. Marketing those forty-eight new seats that we'll have. I'd like to start a fundraising project for signage. A lot of times, parents will say, "We didn't even know you existed, where's your sign?" Well, we don't really have one yet, we're working on it. And our past equality rating visit, which is another set of criteria. Once you become licensed, you're supposed to go through the past equality rating scale. We did that as Little Cats, and now we're going to do it as Whitco Early Learning Academy. And my big-picture focus is to expand the before and after-school care program and integrate that into the elementaries. Our Whitco homeschool pathway has forty-seven, actually forty-eight active enrollments. I think I had five register today, so it's, that is a growing program, and I foresee it to have over a hundred students by the end of the year. As far as grants go, the Workforce Employer Grant has been completed with the FSSA. This is in hopes to provide seed funding for employers of Whitco and employee subsidized care benefits to address the local childcare needs. And a big-picture goal for me is to create grant-focused teams within our administration and our leadership groups to pinpoint the needs of the district and work together collaboratively as a district. Any questions?
No, thank you.
It's a lot of exciting things.
Thank you.
Lots of stuff.
Thank you.
From Pearson Elementary, we have Kristi Hopper.
Good evening. Lots going on. We have, Student Council is still trying to collect milk jugs, and we are a little behind the eight ball, and I'm trying to drink lots of coffee and giving them my purified water bottles, so I'm contributing slowly but surely. But anyway, that's been extended through our up-to-Christmas break, so we want to get that bench ready to go for South Whitley. Parent-teacher conferences, we had a hundred-and-fifty-two conferences on October twenty-sixth and a hundred-and-twenty conferences on November second, so we had a pretty good turnout. We were able to share Schoolpace, Parent Connect resources, ERLA data, NWA DIBELS, classroom assessments, all kinds of, kinds of data and resources to parents, so we were pretty happy about that. Our Veterans Day program was mentioned. I was unable to attend that day, but heard lots of praise for putting that together and how well that went. So I have shout-outs for especially Crystal Johnson, our art teacher, and our music teacher, Tammy Sprunger. They really stepped in and helped get that organized for us, they did an awesome job. Upcoming clusters for ARC are related to status of the class reports and equitable conferencing, reading conferencing. So we have lots of data that we're slowly but surely learning how to put in, so that our reading levels are more accurate. We're doing a lot in the classroom, but it hasn't all been entered, and so we're learning how to get that out there, so that, that everybody can see what we're doing and get our data to be more accurate as well. Grade-level collaborations, our PLCs that we have twice a month are also focusing on reading and writing standards, resources, and best instructional practices and scaffolds. So we're working really closely with ARC and what we know as best practices for reading and, and writing interlocking, and making sure that we're being thorough with, with what we have in the classroom, in addition to what ARC provides. ILT as well is kind of focusing right now on writing when we do our learning walks, and just components of that in the literacy block, and we're able to give short snippets of feedback to all the grade-level teachers, so that's been going pretty well. And then also looking forward to short formative assessments, so how we can supplement, in addition to the writing assessments that are throughout our curriculum, different types of assessments, so that we make sure that students are prepared for I read three and I learn. All right, so PTO is meeting December sixth, so we bumped that up just a little bit to get planning for the Christmas store. So they're planning on using Pigeon Patch Kids Holiday Shop. I have never heard of that before, but they seem to have a lot going with that and are excited about what they can provide for, for that fund for parents and families and the students. And this is just kind of a celebration for just ARC and, and reading, the excitement and the engagement around reading. So Carter Kreip is a fifth grader in Mrs. Woodard's class, who is really digging the study of oceans and ocean life. And in that research unit in Unit Two, he stated that he feels that studying the oceans and ocean ecosystems is lacking, and he wants to be more of a researcher to share out what he can find. So that was pretty exciting. He's been researching essential questions and research around that and putting together a pretty awesome project. Our ERLA data, again, is showing small increases in most grade levels, but as we work on putting in more data, I, I see that improving even great, more greatly. So I think that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. From South Whitley Elementary, Mr. Joel Hall Sappel.
I, first of all, want to apologize for my report. When I looked at it, and it's printed out, it looks different than what it looked like on my computer screen. It's a little hard to read. Our reading levels are improving slowly, and I wanted to highlight that we are conferencing with students, and that's an important thing. So in October, on the sixteenth, two-hundred-and-nine of our students had, had a conference, and as of November sixteenth, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine of our students have. So we're, we're meeting with our students more frequently, getting them the instruction that they need. So I wanted you to know that. Like Kristi said, some of our, what our kids are learning is amazing through our ARC curriculum. I had a kinder, a parent tell me that their kindergartner was talking about mammals, and the parent kind of did a double-take, "What are you talking about?" So that's some of the vocabulary, the new science of reading, or the science of reading that we're learning about is about phonics, and it's about vocabulary to help kids be better at reading. And the curriculum we have is giving them background in that vocabulary that they need, and then the phonics are a piece of it, too, so that's very exciting. I will say that the ARC curriculum is difficult, and at times, we do want to quit, just because it's so hard, and it's new, and we're, we're going through unchartered territory, and the teachers are really working at it, like Kristi said, trying to learn these new things, and there's new ways of doing it, and it is challenging for us. But thank you for, I mean, providing that for our teachers and for our students. We are finding out what we need. There are some things that we don't have that we need and we're requesting, just to meet the needs of our students and to put those, those pieces and the tools in the hands of our teachers. I also, I think of Ms. Kylie Kern here, that she's in a practicum, right, am I right? At the, at our school, and it's so exciting, and I think she's going into education. It's so exciting to have those new people, young people, that are working in our schools, that are Whitco grads, that are also working in our schools, wanting to go into education. And I just wanted to recognize her and, and her fellow students. A last thing is, we're conducting a food drive for the food bank in South Whitley, and, and that's coming up. So, any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Benedict from Whitco Career Academy.
Maybe we could get Kylie a provisional contract.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. Our WCA, our Work-Based Learning Highlighting Student of the Month is Marissa Clay, and she is working at Paragon. Our WCA FFA held their Boogie Night Dance out in the barn on Friday the tenth, November tenth. They competed in the crops area contest on the fourteenth, and then as the, Mr. Johns and Mrs. Murby stated earlier, tomorrow night will be their Christmas tree option, so looking forward to those events happening. Our eighth graders presented their nonprofit grant request presentation to the Hands Foundation before Thanksgiving break. That's part of their charitable champions curriculum through the year College and Careers Class. Each one of them got to present to the Hands Foundation, and then the Hands Foundation took one of those, those projects and moved on with that. So the Engineering Department made some Don Wood Foundation memorabilia pieces for their Board of Directors that visited on November first. They had a new set of Board of Directors that came on that weren't necessarily a part of the first, when this opened up and the foundation was here. They went away extremely impressed by everything that we have here in the academy and understand where their investment went and what is happening with their investment. So it was a great day for them to be here, to see all of the different programming that we have in the manufacturing, machining, welding, as well as the engineering and the other programs that we offer, too. So it was a really good day to have them back out with, with their new board members to kind of see kind of what we're all about. Our, our Construction Trades Morning Class has been working really hard to complete their deer stands. Probably see them as you pull up, all of them have already been pre-sold, so those are all been taken care of. And then our afternoon class has been working really hard on the job site, preparing for the framing of the house that they're assisting in building this, in this semester. So it's exciting for our Construction Trades kids with a number of hands-on things that they're doing. Education professions and early childhood, again, another plug for them. Just students getting observed this week, basically teaching a lesson in their classroom, just like a normal teacher would. And from their host classroom, and that's part of their final grade, they've created their professional portfolio, their resume, their cover letter, evaluations, lesson plans, assignments are all included in that portfolio, and they've created bulletin boards, journal entries, and several hours of infield experience. So hopefully, getting that part to where we're gonna start growing our own teachers here. So that's an exciting thing that we're doing. All right?
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
That's exciting, yeah.
From Whitco Junior-Senior High, Amy Evans. I'll go ahead and highlight the Growing Your Own program that both principals have talked about tonight. Manchester University is meeting tomorrow to look into classes that we can offer, so our students go in a year or two ahead, and they're back in our building two, three years after they graduate. I had a really fun opportunity to talk to all the seniors getting ready to go to their field experiences today, and there are some amazing future educators out there that we need to grab hold of and welcome them into Whitco. We had a group of about twenty-two at the high school in South Whitley, and overall, many times over, they said how welcoming it was, how incredible our staff and students are. And I think that any time we get to highlight those positive things is a good thing. And we will have some more information about the Grow Your Own program very shortly, so we're excited for that. Upcoming events, we have a federal student aid night on November twenty-seventh. They changed the rules about FAFSA. Schools are now required to get all students registered for FAFSA. That way, if they do change their mind about going to college, they still have that opportunity for financial aid. So we're offering financial aid help nights throughout the year to help parents and students navigate that. We also have our choir concert coming up on Sunday, December third, at 2:00 PM. And then December fourteenth, there will be our band concert at 6:30. And I know they always have nice treats for us prior to the concert, so you're welcome to come. Thank you.
What was the date on the band again?
The band is December fourteenth.
Thanks. The Athletic Director, Barry Singray.
Good evening, I have just a few athletic updates for tonight. The new sound system has been installed in the gym. We're still working with All Pro Sounds to make a few adjustments, but excited for, for that upgrade in our sound system. Should be fully completed soon, and then we can look into some new projects. Few athletic updates, our winter introduction and senior night dates, we're finalizing those now and should have those shared here very soon. We'll be recognizing our youth boys and girls basketball programs this winter, as well as our junior high boys and girls basketball programs. Our wrestling and girls' basketball teams will be doing alumni nights, and then, again, we'll be sharing our senior night dates as well. A few feeder program updates. Whitco Youth Girls Basketball just completed the Club One League out of West Noble, and congratulations to our sixth-grade team on winning that championship. Our Whitco Boys Youth Basketball is currently competing in the Club One League right now. And then Whitco Girls Youth Volleyball will be beginning a local travel program that will start in December with call-outs, practices, and competitions in January and February. Would like to, or the Athletic Department would like to recognize and thank our parents for their support and dedication to our youth sports programs. We've had not only a fantastic turnout and students participating, but we've really seen growth in our parent volunteers. And at the kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth grade levels, we really need parents to step up and help and coach those youth teams and assist with some of those clinics and camps that we run. And this year has been, we, I guess we just sort of noticed a lot more improvement in that area. Parents are really stepping up, and that's what it's all about, getting the parents in the community and the kids involved. So really excited about that, and looking forward to watching it continue to grow. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. The Director of Operations, Rhonda Snably.
Good evening, just a few updates that are new. We're collecting all the mowers to get them in and get them ready, get the oil changed, that we can get them back out to the schools for snow removal, that hurts to even say. Getting plows, getting those ready to get on the trucks. We order our salt from the town every year, and that was delivered today. We're continuing to work on the cleanup and the organizing of the shop and then the other buildings. And we're getting ready to set up interviews for our bus mechanic. I have a couple applicants I'm pretty excited about. We're just kind of maintaining for now, and everything's going really well. On the maintenance side, I'm working with Lynn to get his office ready for him to move into. Working with Hable, I did realize here, Hable will not be replacing the water meter Wednesday. They're putting water into the building trades room. So the water meter, that work is gonna be done over Christmas break, 'cause the whole building needs to be shut down. We're working to replace the basketball goal winch switches at the high school and this building. The internal mechanisms, I think, are warped, so the keys are no longer working properly, and we can't have keys made for those, so we are gonna get those replaced hopefully over Christmas break as well. We've also been working with Barry and the Athletic Department to change out the athletic cores, so that the coaches will have one key that they will be able to get into everything that they need. So that will help eliminate some of the keys that are floating around for different things and kind of rein that in a little bit. And we're working with the different buildings to replace some of the equipment that is well past its prime. We have thirty-year-old carpet cleaners, and we're putting more money into them than what they're worth, 'cause they still don't do a great job when they're fixed. So we're working on that as well, so, any questions?
I have a quick question. What, what did you mean by then, Liningburg's, was Liningburg his office, his room?
It's, it's already there. It's, it was the storage room. With Denise coming on board, they're currently sharing an office, so he's just gonna move into the other room.
Here?
Yes, yeah, it's just right across the hallway, just painting and minor, nothing major.
I thought, where is he going?
No, no, he's just maybe ten steps. Any more questions? Thank you, Rhonda.
The Director of Special Services, Carrie Wallmer.
Good evening. Today was our initial rollout for our pair professional development training. We have close to twenty support staff that have elected in this opportunity, which they'll be able to access that throughout the the entire school year. Topics for this are specifically focused on understanding and managing behaviors, trauma-informed practices, managing crisis situation, and inclusive practices. As I mentioned last month, our continued focus is surrounding on our upcoming December One Count Day, which is used to generate state funding for students with disabilities. Our staff have really been working diligently on making sure our paperwork is compliant and accurate for that final data poll. I have a meeting next month with Easter Seals to discuss the implementation of pre-employment transition services for secondary students. These services are going to help equip our students with the skills needed for job exploration counseling, work-based learning experience, and then workplace readiness training, so I'm excited to have that started. Do you have any questions?
Looks good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And finally, Jason Klein, Director of Technology.
Good evening. The Technology Department is working hard to keep up with the needs of staff and students. As a very small department, each member wears a lot of different hats and deals with a lot of unexpected situations. I would like to say how proud I am of all of them for the rising to the challenges in the recent months. We've begun planning our device purchases.
Jason.
Yes.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear? Okay. Is that any better? A little more, okay, sorry. Would you like me to start over? The Technology Department is working hard to keep up with the needs of staff and students. As a very small department, each member wears a lot of different hats and deals with a lot of unexpected situations. I would like to say how proud I am of them for all rising to the challenges in the recent months. We've been planning our device purchases for the twenty-five school year. In addition to the usual purchases of devices for first, fifth, and ninth grade, we will be replacing many of our WJSH and WCA teacher devices. We're working with other departments in preparation for the renovations that are coming up, as well as ones that are already underway, and rewiring projects have begun and are making a difference in internet speeds in our more congested areas. Lastly, Justin Rose and Janet Malloy head up our elementary tech teams, which we've been doing for several years now. This has allowed some of our students to learn about customer service and technical support, and one of our earliest tech team students, Dawson Bradley, is now our senior work-based learning employee, and I just can't wait to see what today's tech team kids want to do during their senior year. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Povarnik, you have a superintendent update.
We have a donation of five-hundred and dollars' worth of coats, clothing, shoes, and hygiene products to Pearson Elementary School children that are in need of that from the Concejasco County Builders Association, we sincerely appreciate that. I want to just do a shout-out, a big thank you to all our teachers and our master teachers and our mentors. We talk about the improvements we're seeing in reading and the ARC program, and you know, that's just been a lot of work on them, and they've all have bought in, they've all jumped in, and they've all put a lot of work in into their classroom, into their students with our ARC program, so that didn't come easy, that didn't come without just a lot of dedication and hard work from our teachers, our master teachers that are mentors. So, I just wanted to acknowledge them and thank them and all the leadership, career leader and leadership in helping move that program along, and we're all excited to see how it's going to grow and really help our students moving forward. And looking at the, just the awesome setup out in the barn at the Christmas time and the auction coming up, I want to thank the FFA parents, they all came in here over the weekend and worked very hard to get that set up, and just kudos to them for all their hard work for the program.
Thank you. We have no public comments tonight, so we're going to move on to our business reports and consent agenda. This includes meeting minutes and different employment opportunities and things, so I would entertain a motion to accept our business reports and consent agenda as presented.
I move we accept the business reports and consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept the business reports and consent agenda as presented, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes, four to one. In new business, we have seven point one, which is the approval of the non-certified staff pay, can I get a motion for that, please?
I move that we approve the non-certified staff pay as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the non-certified staff pay as presented, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. In seven point two, we have a resolution opening perf benefits for our school bus drivers, can I get a motion for that, please?
I make a motion that we open the perf benefits to school bus drivers.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we open our perf benefits for our school bus drivers, is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes. Seven point three is the approval of annual field trips, along with the following trips, just a couple of short ones, looks like a Gettysburg and Washington DC trip, could I get a motion to approve these field trips, please?
I move that we accept the annual field trips as presented. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the annual field trips and the following field trips as presented, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand, aye. And those opposed? The motion passes. We have no old business at this time, Mr. Povarnik, is there anything administrative that you'd like to speak about?
Nope, everybody have a safe and nice Thanksgiving.
All right, a few miscellaneous items, our next school board work session is Wednesday, December the thirteenth, at four o'clock in the WCA TAP room. The next board meeting here in this room is Monday, December eighteenth, at 6:30. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, the meeting is adjourned, thank you all, have a happy Thanksgiving.